Okay, folks, I have 6:30. Let's get started here. We'll call a meeting to order. We should have a quorum. Keith is here, and Bruce, and Brian, and Tom, myself, five regular members. The next thing on the agenda is acceptance of the agenda. Before we start, number five, we can cross that out. Randy got a letter today saying that they want to retract the abandonment form. So what we can do is just cross that one out. Randy, we can cross out number seven. Randy has no CEO report. It's all things he can handle, nothing that's really applicable to the planning board. So that being said, I take a motion to accept the agenda with the exception of number five and number seven.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you. Acceptance of the five nine, May ninth, planning board minutes.
I move we accept the minutes as printed.
It's been moved in second. We accept the minutes from the last meeting on May ninth. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you. The next thing is site plan review and public hearing for Wayne Hamilton doing business as Hamilton Marine. The applicant requests the expansion of an existing warehouse at 8 Trundy Road, which is map 10, lot 36B, and that's in the commercial zone. Code enforcement had, officer had determined that the application is complete. A fee of $260 will be paid on that, probably, definitely tomorrow morning, I think. All the staff, I believe I gave you the staff sign-off sheet. If I haven't, they all signed off with no comments at all. And you'll see in the application that Wayne Hamilton has title to the property. You also see from the application that it's own commercial and warehouse slash storage facilities are allowed in that commercial zone. The butters were notified on May 31st of the public hearing, and it also appeared in the June 9th edition of the Republican Journal. So at this time, we should open the public meeting. And Wayne, do you want to, and your guests, do you want to have a seat at the long table in front of you? Okay, let me ask the planning board members if they have any conflict of interest or bias in review of this. No, none, none at this time. Laura, we'll be voting for the regular members then, okay? We have a quorum, as I pointed out before. The board has jurisdiction to review this by the land use ordinance. As I pointed out before, the applicant has title to the property. So Wayne, you want to tell us a little bit about what you want to do? And push the button on your microphone?
Well, we just want to go to the east of our current warehouse with expansion for better receiving operation, just to smooth up things. And basically, it's just a shed on the side of it, a large one.
Okay, thank you. Pretty simple. Okay. Do any of the voting members tonight have questions of the applicant? Keith will start out with you now? I know you do.
You just think I'm going to.
Well, you grabbed the microphone, so.
And put the button on. Good thinking. And this is going to butt right up to the existing roof.
Yes.
Hence the difference in elevation between 23 feet and 18 feet, huh? Continue the same grade on the roof.
Right.
Coming off the back. I thought that.
Brian?
I'm good, thank you.
Tom?
I have no questions.
Okay. I have a couple that we need to get answered. Storage of material, one of the questions in the land use ordinance, Wayne, is whether you're going to store dangerous material, explosive, fire hazards, in that particular building?
No.
Okay. The other thing was, and I don't think it's applicable, but there's no signage at all on the new building, is there? Or is there?
No.
No? Okay. Exterior lighting in the area, I know you've mentioned that there's going to be one light on the side, I think Charlie?
Someone's the other side.
There'll be full cutoff wall packs, similar to what's on the existing building at the dock.
No other outside lighting than what's already?
Only at the doors in their full cutoff.
Yeah.
Wall packs like what we've used in the past.
The other question I had was water or wastewater. Is there any water being utilized in the new addition? And there's no use of wastewater?
Nope.
Or anything in that? Okay, that's all the questions I had. And I don't see anybody from the general public here, so we'll close the meeting at this time. I think it's 6:37. Is that good enough, Debbie? I'm sorry. Laura, did you have any questions? So the board members would turn page 28 of the land use ordinance. And Laura, you have all that in that book I left for you, yeah? Okay, and I'll take individual motions on each one of these. The first one, under general performance standards, a section A, or section five subsection A.
I move that that meets the requirement because there is no material that is dangerous that is going to be stored.
No, based on the applicant's.
Yes, on his testimony.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Tom, thank you. All those in favor? Five zero zero. The second one is vibrations.
I move this not applicable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second, and vibration is not applicable in this ordinance. All those in favor? Five zero zero. The next one is waste.
I move that's been met, based on the testimony of the applicant. There's no water, wastewater of any kind that will be in the building in that addition.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Five zero zero. And under general performance standards, noise.
I move that's been met. It's similar to the business that goes on in the existing warehouse, and they certainly meet the noise standards for that, so I contend they will also meet the noise standards for the new addition.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
It's been moved in second, that that's met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. And number five, the last one under A, which is exterior lighting.
That's been met? There will always, there won't be no adverse.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that that standard has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, if we drop down to number subsection B, specific performance standards, I would ask that the board look at those. When I looked at them, I didn't think one through 10 is applicable in this instance. However, 11 is and does require a site plan review because it's so stated in the land use ordinance. So if you'll take a minute to look over those, one through 10, and if someone thinks there's something applicable there or otherwise.
No, I looked at signs, but there aren't any, so it's not applicable.
Is that a motion, Brian?
Okay, I move that section B six is not applicable because there are no exterior signs.
And the rest of those, one through 10?
And the one through, the rest of one through five and seven through 10 do not apply.
Okay. Was there a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor? Five zero zero. And then number 11 is applicable in, because it's in the land use ordinance. If we go to page, don't put that away yet. If we go to page 34. And on page 34, you see section G, positive findings required. There's four different subsections under that. In looking them over, they're all applicable, so I'll need a motion on each one of those.
I move that number one has been met because it is a permitted use in the commercial district.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Five zero zero. And can we move to number two?
That has been met.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that number two's been met, which is conformance with the applicable performance standards in section five. All those in favor of that? Five zero zero. Number three.
Do you need any permits for that?
Just the local.
Just Randy's, yeah.
Just Randy's?
Yeah. And Randy, I believe you've issued tentatively a building permit, so he has.
Yeah.
Well, I move that condition number three is met because the code enforcement officer has given them a building permit.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second, number three, which is received, or as a commission, condition of approval, will receive all permits, local and state and federal. All those in favor of that motion? Five zero zero. And number six, I think I sent you, again, copies of all the sign-off sheets, all the people had signed off with no comment, all the staff. Including the police chief, which would govern safe egress.
Yes, I move that that condition's been met because the police chief has signed off, and they're using an existing site that has safe access and egress, so that will not change.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Five zero zero. How about we have a total motion on the land use ordinance?
I move that the land use ordinance standards have been met.
I'll second. It's been moved in second that all the standards in the land use ordinance have been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, if we move on to, now's your chance, to the site plan review. That's page, starts on page seven, standards of approval. Or for those that have the short copy, go to your short copy. Let me ask Wayne, right now, I think you have trailers in that location?
Yes.
So this will really enhance the look of the property by putting it all under a roof that matches the existing building. Okay, I guess we're all there. Under section six, standards of approval, number one is preserve and enhance the landscape.
I move that that's been met because there is no tree removal, no existing vegetation, and as you just pointed out, the trailer is being absent, and replacing with a true building will enhance the look of the site.
Is there a second on that? It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Five zero zero. We move the number two, relationship of proposed building to the environment.
I move that that's been met. It's going to be almost identical, except a little smaller than the current building, and the roof lines will match up. So it is in relationship to the proposed building, to the environment, current environment.
May I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that the proposed, relationship of proposed building to the environment standard has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. The next one being vehicle access.
I move that's been met, and we already voted on that, as part of standard G four under the land use ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved in second that vehicle access has been met, number three. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Next one being parking and circulation.
I move that's been met. The circulation has certainly been good for the trailers that are currently there, and I don't think you have any pedestrian traffic that goes out there.
May I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that parking and circulation standard has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number five is surface water drainage. And I believe runoff, there's no change on that, is there Charlie?
No, that, we're not adding any more imperious ground or land than what's there now. It's either we're going to where the trailers, gravel or hot top, and there's drainage catch basin directly in front of the spot where the building's going to go, and the water's going to go where it's continued, where it goes now.
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing really changes.
Right. Thank you, Charlie. So I'll take a motion on that standard.
I move that that standard's been met, based on the applicant's testimony of the gravel and the paper and the catch basins and whatever, that there will be no adverse surface water drainage.
Second.
It's been moved in second that surface water drainage standard has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Existing utilities, number six.
I move that's been met because all the appropriate town staff has signed off.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that number six, existing utilities, has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you, Randy. Advertising features of the development, number seven.
I move that's not applicable because there are no exterior signs.
Second.
It's been moved in second that number seven, advertising features of the development is not applicable. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number eight, special features of the development, which would include exposed storage areas, exposed machinery.
I move that's been met, based on the application submitted, the, there are certainly adequate setbacks, and there's no exposed machinery, and the truck loading areas are currently there anyway, so.
Can we get a second on that?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that special features of the development has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Moving to number nine, which is exterior lighting.
I move that's been met because they will use, the only lighting that will be there will be the full cutoff devices that are currently used.
Second.
It's been moved in second that number nine, exterior lighting standard has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number 10, emergency vehicle access.
I move that's been met because the appropriate personnel from the town have signed off.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that the standard of emergency vehicle access to all buildings has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you. Number 11, municipal services.
I move that's been met, again, because the appropriate town personnel have signed off.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the standard, number 11, of municipal services has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number 12, which is water pollution.
I move that both number 12 and number 13 do not apply because there's no water going to be in that addition.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that number 12 and number 13, which is on-site water supply. Number 12 being water pollution are not applicable. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number 14, soil erosion. Which I think everybody has a copy of the notation in the application.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Where there'll be straw bales placed. It's handwritten on the back of one of the forms, I believe.
I move number 14 has been met because in the application itself, it identifies what will be used, and it will not cause unreasonable soil erosion.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that number 14, standard of soil erosion has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Next one is septicage disposal, and I guess we could.
I see that's not applicable.
Say number 16 is not applicable also? Can we?
Well, we can do them separately.
You want to do them separate? Okay.
Yeah, I agree, it's not, it's not applicable. 15, there's no sewage. Nothing to dispose of.
That, there was a motion, and a second.
I'll second Bruce's motion.
Okay. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number 16. I have to admit that there are no state wildlife habitats or rare natural areas in that area.
I move that number 16 is not applicable because, as you mentioned, there's no wildlife habitat there, and if anything, the scenic beauty will be enhanced by having a building rather than those trailers. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved that that's not applicable. Is that correct?
I guess I'd say it's been met.
It's been met?
Yeah, because there's no habitat.
All right.
And the scenic.
Probably, there's probably value will go up.
Yeah.
Because of the loss of trailers?
Because of the additional building.
Oh, okay. So it's been moved, I'm sorry, Tom, second that that's not applicable. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number 17, financial and technical capacity. I think you all have a letter from the Hamilton Marine that the money is there to take care of the addition, and I'll vouch for Charlie that he has the technical capability and capacity to handle.
I will.
Well, thank you. All those.
Well, I've done it before, too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Charlie did it before, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second that number 18, I'm sorry, 17, financial and technical capacity has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. And the last one is 18, air quality.
I move that is not applicable because there's nothing that's being put out into the existing air.
It's moved.
I'll second.
Second? Okay. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, can we get a motion on the review standards in the site plan review? Have they been met, all of them, all 18?
I move that all 18 of the site plan review standards have either been met or not applicable.
It's been moved in second that all 18 standards in the site plan review have been met or are not applicable. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Can we get a motion on the application itself?
I move we accept the application. Approve it, excuse me. We've already accepted it, now we're approving.
Approve it.
First the air goes, then.
Did I hear a second now there, Tom?
I'll second.
Yeah, you're right.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, let's sign. The application is being approved. Do you want to get that? All right. And then give that to Wayne, Keith, when you're done.
Yep.
There's the yard. I think you know, I think that, so you guys have the building thing, too, so you know what that was when you get ready.
That's later on.
This is now.
Wayne, thank you very much. Keith has your copy of the approved application. Within about two weeks, you'll get a copy of our finding of facts and all, but you can start, and obviously, anytime you're ready.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, folks.
Okay, folks, let's go to number eight, which is old business. The police chief isn't here. He wanted me to bring up the yard sales. Apparently, the response he's had to the yard sale part of the land use ordinance has been good, that people are coming to him and asking him for a permit. I think, as you all know, that that was put in because of traffic problems on Route One, and he said that's working out very nicely. There is one concern he has, and the concern being that people are putting out merchandise with a sign that says free. And also, that is causing on Route One a possible traffic problem because of people stopping for that. So he wanted to know if we think about any way that we could take care of that situation. So if you'll think about that until our next meeting, and maybe you can come up with something, maybe we can.
They're trying to tell me what I put out free, and I got to take away.
Well, most of the time, when you put it out free, within five minutes or 10 minutes, it's gone. it's gone anyway, but.
Some is just junk, and it can be an avoided cost of disposal.
Yeah.
One way, if it's out there and it says free, if you have someone like Evergreen or Pinkerton, or someone goes by to pick it up, or the other thing, the town was going to pick it up a day later, that puts an additional expense on the town.
On the town, right. George, has there been?
You get treated the same way as if for a yard sale. It's a yard sale with no charge, no fee.
Yeah. Has there been any concern about the fact that he's asked for a two-week, application two weeks ahead of time, because I'm wondering about the weather playing into that? How does, how does, is, is there any feedback that's negative because of that long lead time?
Not, not that I know of, okay?
Try again in a little bit.
And I see Randy shaking his head no.
No, I, you, I, you guys have to bear with me, George, no, I lost my hearing aid last weekend, so I'm a new one to come in, so. I think what you asked was, is there any feedback with the weather problems, something like that?
Well, yeah, if somebody plans two weeks ahead of time, and then it rains heavily.
No, what the chief has done is, if it's the weather, he crossed, he kind of doesn't use that one because they couldn't have the yard sale, and uses that as a blank, and continues to give them another one for another day, and that'll be their first one.
Okay.
It's, it's, in the most part, it's worked out very well.
Good.
It's okay.
Okay, that's all I had. Do any of the members have anything?
I actually have no problem.
Well, good.
I get free too.
Laura, do you have anything you want to bring up?
Uh, no, I just have to admit that I was unaware that you have to get a permanent permit, so. Just now.
A lot of people are the same.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a penalty, like, how are people being notified of this requirement?
Normally, when the police go around, they'll see these yard sales and talk to the people. It's been in the newspaper, in Damaris', Dick Damaris' column, he's put out a bulletin on Radio Searsport. It was at the town meeting, because it's part of the land use ordinance. And like I say, the last resort is the police when they go around on regular patrols. If they see a yard sale that's been there on Route One in a commercial zone more than once, then they'll stop and talk to the.
So it's applied to Route One?
No, it reply, it applies to the entire town, okay? Although, it's, the number of yard sales you may have is, is specific to a certain zone. On Route One, it's only one because of the amount of traffic that's.
I'm on Route One with a car, I could have one.
Is it? I think the industrial zone, there are none because there are basically no houses in the industrial zone. When you get into the residential, it goes up to three, I believe. And, and that's, just like our land use ordinance, it's a work in progress, okay? So maybe, you know, next year, it may be changed, I don't know. Depends on the feedback, this is the first year, so. Depends on his feedback. Does that answer your question? Okay.
That's what I learned about it, Dick, writing the paper.
Yeah. Anyone else? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?